Hi, welcome back. And today we are with the Nashville Chamber, Wendy Hunt. I'm George and we are interviewing all of the candidates for the Board of Education for downtown Nashua. Wendy?
Good morning. Welcome back to our Meet the Candidates series. This is part one of three. You can watch us live on Facebook or WSNM Live. We also will have it on Nashville Public Television Channel 6. Today, our second guest running for Nashville Board of Education is incumbent Heather Raymond. Heather, thank you for joining us today.
Thanks for having me. This is really neat. I don't think you guys have done this before.
We've done it for the bigger, you know, like the state and federal, but one of the aldermen, who I'm friendly with, said, "How come you guys don't do anything local?" And I said, "Well, it's a lot of candidates." But George and I put our heads together and we're like, "Well, we can do it on the radio."
Yeah, it's on TV and radio. It's live on TV right now as well, so, and we will edit it out so we can replay it, so.
Oh, that's fantastic.
You're getting a big bang here this morning, Heather. A big bang here this morning.
Great. Well, thanks for having me.
Well, tell us, for people that don't know you, tell us a little about you and why you're running in.
Why? Oh, okay, great. So, I am, I have two, I have multiple hats that I wear. So, I've been on the Board of Education here in Nashua since, this is my second term, so it's been eight years. And then I'm also one of the state representatives for Ward One in Nashua, and I'm on my second term for that. And then I also am a mom. I have kids who go to North. And so, I'm busy a lot. I do a lot of stuff with the kids, with school, with the school board, and then I'm on the Child and Family Law Committee up at the State House and the DCYF Advisory Board. I used to be a social worker, and I worked with kids who were abused, some neglected. And so, like, my whole life, my whole career has been about making sure that our kids have what they need.
But you've been a, you've been, you're an incumbent, correct?
I am, yep.
Okay, so, and how long ago have you been on the school board? Was your first term, or?
So, this is my second term, so eight years.
Okay.
It's a huge time commitment.
Yes, when you, when you first ran, what was your MO for running then?
So, when I first ran, my kids were in elementary school, and at that time, the Nashville Board was seriously thinking about, and I think they had voted, to privatize the custodians here in Nashua. And there was a big push in the community to not do that. I was opposed to that idea for a number of reasons. One of which is that we privatized busing, you know, back in the 90s, and now we're stuck in this ever-increasing transportation cost. We don't have enough buses, we don't have enough drivers. I didn't want to see that happen with our custodial staff. The other reason was that their impetus for doing it was to save money, because they thought we were spending too much on the custodial contracts. I'm a union person. I was in a union in my previous career. I don't believe in union busing for the sake of doing that. And I had some significant reservations about how we are going to have appropriate background checks on people who are in the schools and around our children, if the district isn't making sure that that's happening.
I remember that.
So, the reason for why I asked that question is some of the things that, the issues besides that, there's plenty of them eight years ago. Have you seen any positive change since you've been in there for eight years? Are we kind of, you know, at the same juncture we were back then?
Well, yes, yeah. I think there's been a lot of positive change. There's been a lot of other changes, wow. The school district is not static. So, over the last eight years, a lot has happened in education. We have seen a drastic increase in school shootings across the country. And one of the things that I'm most proud of, that we've done on the Board of Education in conjunction with the aldermen, is we have been building security vestibules on our buildings. We've done 17 of them now. So, another thing that happened eight years ago was New Hampshire changed the law and said that you could no longer prohibit people from carrying guns into school buildings. So, we have now built these security vestibules, so when people come to our buildings to drop off and pick up things, they can be in a safe place with bulletproof glass, preventing them from accessing the rest of the building and our children.
Biggest thing, right?
Yeah.
Now, too? Not much has changed. We still have to be concerned about certain issues.
We do.
Getting in, getting out.
We do, but I think, I think the district has made really great strides on building up school security and school safety.
So, if you, if you were motivated by certain situations that you talked about, and you did run, now you, what is your MO for running again?
So, the work is never done, right? That's the thing about education. Things are changing rapidly. We're finding that more and more of our students are coming in needing special education services. I learned, actually, from some of the work I was doing at the State House, about the levels of restraint and seclusions. And Nashua has some of the highest levels of restraint and seclusion.
What's that? What is restraint?
When a child is having a behavioral outburst in class that makes themselves or the people around them unsafe, the school has to contain their behavior so that no one gets hurt.
Okay, so when I was a kid, those types of kids were separated from the other kids. Is that not happening today? They're in the same, they're in the same classroom as others?
They're, so, we mainstream our students, yeah. It's best for everyone if all students from all backgrounds and all abilities are mixed together at the elementary level.
You think so?
I do. But when they have a behavioral outburst, then the restraint and seclusion happens, when they are either removed from the situation and taken to a calm-down space, or sometimes the class has to leave.
So, let me ask you this, and I'm not going to be controversial, but there are people that are probably going to ask the same questions that I will, and if you know me, I don't, I'm not here to stroke anybody. Some of those individuals, and of course, all individuals in the classrooms, whether there's five or 20, everybody learns at a different pace, and everybody learns differently. Some people need to be seen, some read, some need to touch, right? But if we have some with some learning disabilities in the same classroom and those that don't, how is that even?
So, there's a couple ways that teachers address this. One is with differentiated instruction and small group instruction. And that's been happening.
How can one teacher handle all that with 25 kids in a classroom, though?
Well, most of our classes aren't 25 kids. The average class size in Nashua is about 17.
That's a lot!
So, it is a lot. The other thing that they do is, students who need differentiated instruction as part of their individualized education plan, their learning plan, have IEPs that specifically list what interventions they need, and they have specific staff to provide those information, those interventions.
So, the paraprofessionals, George?
Sure.
It's not one teacher with...
Yeah, paraeducators. There's also pull-out services, so maybe a child needs extra help in reading, so they'll maybe leave the classroom for a little bit to get the extra help in reading, but then come back, because science is something that they can do with all their peers.
I want to go back to the budget for a second, from the last candidate who enlightened me on a thing, as I don't know, how does the Board of Education in Nashua get its budget? Is it from the state or from the city?
Both.
Okay, both, so.
And also the federal government.
Okay, so who's the one that puts forth how much we need? Is it the Board of Education or the aldermen?
So, here's how it works. The Board of Education is a division of the city. So, just like the fire, or the police, or...
Okay, so you have to go forth with a budget?
So, we have to create a budget. And really, it's the, we have a chief financial officer, right, and our superintendent.
Who was that?
Crystal DeGray, and the superintendent is Mario Andrade. And so, they create a budget. They meet with all their departments, and then they put on a budget presentation. It takes weeks in the spring.
Oh, yeah, I can imagine.
Right? And every department says, "This is what we absolutely need, like, this is what's changed since last year, this is what we'd like." And then they all present that to the school board. And then the school board looks at the budget, and they say, you know, "What can we," oops, I keep touching the microphone, "what can we, what can we, what do we absolutely have to have, and what things are, would be nice," right? And then, we send that package over to the aldermen, and then the aldermen vote on it. So, we vote, and then the aldermen vote. We can make line item changes at the school board level, but the aldermen can only talk about the bottom line. So, they can say, "We're not going to give you, you know, X amount."
Are you the longest-serving on the board right now?
I think I am.
Are you the grandmother of the Board of Education, Heather?
I think, because when Dottie Oden retired, I think that left me as the longest-serving member.
Well, I'm sure you pay attention to the news, and which I have to, but, jeez Louise, the nightmare that's going on with the Claremont School District.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
And I don't know, if you were here eight years ago, we had a similar, almost similar situation in Nashua.
So, that was before my time. I came in right in the middle of where there had been a lot of changes in the superintendent's office. There was a superintendent who had, I don't know, mismanaged money in some way.
Yes, it was bad.
It was bad. So, by the time I came on, that had been resolved.
So, you fixed it. Basically, since you've come on, we're just killing it right now. We are killing it. What do you think about cell phones in the classrooms? That's a big topic as well, the state level on the way down.
It is, it is a big topic. So, I have teenagers, and my teenagers were not happy about this change.
Of course not.
I supported having cell phones off during class time.
You want them on?
Off.
Okay, good.
Off, during class time, unless, see, I thought there should be teacher discretion. So, my understanding is that there are automotive classes that use cell phones for the diagnostic apps. There are other courses where a cellphone might be used for specific things, journalism, for example. They were having students film their interviews, when they interviewed people on their cell phones, and they cannot do that anymore. And so, they've had to go old-school and figure things out.
Time and place for everything, though.
Time and place for everything. So, there was a report at the last school board meeting from administration, and they said, "Things are going well. We weren't allowing cell phones in the elementary and middle school anyways." So, this is really only impacting, it's new for our sophomores, juniors, and seniors.
Geez, I tell you, I wish I had a mother like Heather when I was growing up.
I know, she's awesome.
I would have been like, I would have been, you would have...
Well, just the amount of time, as a mom of three, I don't even know, two, I mean, but I have three, is what I'm saying, is I did a lot of volunteer work when my kids were young, but I can't imagine, you know, what you're doing. My, my question is, because we, we do have to be respectful of your time, is what do you see as the biggest challenge coming up in your next term that really needs to be addressed?
Budget, budget. So, we aren't in crisis like Claremont, or Pittsfield, or some of the others. However, our transportation costs have increased. We had a big presentation on the special education costs. And while we're getting more money from the state overall, it is not keeping up with the, the rising costs of what our students need. And that's the same for everybody, but I'm significantly concerned about what kinds of cuts we'll be looking at next year.
What about staffing concerns, especially your paraeducators? Are you fully staffed, or?
We asked the administration, the board asked the administration, to go through every single IEP in the district, there's something like 2,200 of them, and match up what the IEP says a student needs, and what our paraeducators staffing actually is. And so, I'm waiting for that report, because I want to know who needs services that's not getting them, and, you know, making sure that everything aligns. However, we're spending a lot on contracts, because we can't find people to hire full-time to provide some of these services. Not just paraeducators, but speech therapists and school psychologists, other types of special education services. And I'm worried about that.
And, and I asked the last candidate, what do you do when you have a significant, a town with significant IEP that moves into the school district mid-year, that you didn't know about when you forecasted that budget six months beforehand? What does that do, the budget, and how do you find that money? And who do you, do you take it from someone else?
You have to take it from somewhere else. The law is very clear. We must meet the needs of our students. And whether we meet them in-house, or we have to send them out to a different placement, depends on the level of need. But Pembroke had this experience last year. They were something like $900,000 over budget because of a special ed situation. And so, you have to cut something.
Want to tell the people how they can find out about you, or support you, or are you holding any other events besides this coming up to meet people?
So, yeah, there'll be a series of Saturday meetings for, actually, all the candidates for the Board of Ed at some playgrounds across the city. Those will be posted on social media coming up. People are welcome to email me. It's RaymondHeatherNH@gmail. I'm on social media. I'm at school board meetings every single week. And then there are other forums happening. I think there'll be one at the library later. The South US Gov students usually run a forum at the TV studio in South.
How many candidates are, I mean, there's quite a few that we're interviewing today. So, how many are on the board?
I think there are two incumbents we're talking to today.
Why, we have two incumbents, but how many is total?
So, there are nine people on the board.
Okay.
Four are being elected this year, and then in two years, five.
Oh, okay.
So, they're four-year terms?
Four-year terms.
Sure you want to do this, huh?
I do. I, I'm really, yeah, I'm really invested. And there are, there are a lot of great things that Nashua does, but there are things that we can work on.
Always.
Well, thank you so much for joining us this morning. Very, very enlightening. We wish you the best.
WSNM, in partnership with the Nashua Chamber of Commerce, present Meet the Candidates, exclusively on WSNM 1590 AM, 95.3 FM, and Nashua Public Television Channel 6. And now your hosts, Wendy Hunt and George Russell.
Me, it's me. All right, good morning, good morning, on a Tuesday, the 16th of September, 2026. All systems go inside the studio. What's this? It's been a year since I, since I seen, since we did this. Put that microphone in front of your mouth. There we go. All right, Wendy Hunt, I'm George Russell. She'll do the intro. We've got a ton of guests for you here this morning. Spread the word. We're live on NPTV6.TV worldwide and Channel 6 Comcast, if you'd like to watch, as we go through seven candidates for the school board of downtown Nashua. We'll be doing our interview. We want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and WSNM for putting this on. So, we will also edit it for TV to be replayed, but for those of you listening, spread the word, it is live. Carry on, Wendy.
Good morning, George, and good morning to our listeners. I'm so excited for the Chamber to be partnering with the station again, and Nashua Public Television Channel 6, in presenting our Meet the Candidates series. A huge thank you to New Hampshire Career Academy for generously sponsoring this series. And you can watch us live also on the Chamber's Facebook feed, or later, we're going to put it on our website, so you can have lots of choices to watch it. This is week one of a three-part Meet the Candidates series. This week, we'll be featuring candidates running for Nashville School Board of Ed, School Board of Education. Parts two and three of our radio series will then feature our aldermanic candidates, and those broadcast dates will be September 30th and October 28th. We'll give you lots of heads up. Our format today, and going forward, is a casual dialogue between George, myself, and the candidate. We want to hear a little bit about each candidate, why they're running, and, and talk about what issues the candidates will really be focusing on if elected. And today, it's going to be our Board of Education topics.
Okay. Well, my, just, oh, she, you know, doing this for so many years, I don't have a script, Wendy, okay? She's got this thing, you got, we have to read live, we, we need like a teleprompter in the studio. Is it my turn to talk?
It's your turn to talk.
What's my thing say? "Good morning, Wendy."
No, it's, you gotta turn the page, George.
Turn the page. Live radio. She has a script. I have to actually read the script.
I'm the one drinking coffee. Maybe I'll shove it across the desk to you.
I don't see, oh, today is our first, am I doing that? Our first guest is...
Yes, you are, that big highlighted area.
This is why I never, this is why I never try out for plays or anything. I never tried out for acting or anything. Well, we do have a, can, I don't need to do this to introduce this young lady, because we go back maybe a decade.
Years, yeah. It's far listeners to know who she is.
Actually, is that broken?
Yeah. That's okay. I'm going to introduce you if you're not George.
Oh.
It's okay.
Okay, anyway, Kendra, Kendra Soule Sisters. And that's how I know her, which we'll get into that a little bit, when she, when they first were here. I mean, we did, we were, might have been the first people to interview you, come on. And it's been, it's been at least a decade. The first thing I asked her this morning, "Did you bring any macaroni and cheese? She's got the best food ever."
Thank you.
Breakfast of champions, right there.
That's right.
Oh, yeah. You still located up right over here at Indian Head Plaza?
Yep, 30 Temple.
Used to be, the station used to be up there. So, it's Kendra Souci Smith?
Correct.
I said it right?
You did.
Oh, I get a hot ball. All right, because I don't know.
You need one.
Gee, you are, this is, is this your, is this your first time running for any position, political position in the city?
It is.
Well, the question, of course, has to come up, is what was the motivation?
The kids.
Your kids, or just the kids?
All the kids.
Okay, so what was it that, you know, just because it's kids, I mean, how, why? What happened? Something happen?
I mean, I have a, I have a daughter who was born legally blind. She was born with congenital cataracts. So, she started the school system at three years old, in special education, right? That's near and dear to my heart, because of my youngest daughter, Nadia. So, we've gone through the system, and, you know, IEPs, and needing services, occupational therapy, all the things. So, she's really motivated me in that sense. And then, I worked at the school for six years, which I know a lot of people know. I worked at South for six years in the, in the kitchen. And then, I also subbed at different schools as a cook. So, I've been at Led Street, I've been at Bicentennial, and then summer school, I did Fairgrounds Elementary. So, and as we all know, I run Feed the Kids here in Nashua, so I deal with a lot of children. Yeah.
Tell us a little about your background. Not many people know what your business is besides, you know, that you started, and what your main issue is, when you, what you see.
So, growing up, I was in foster care at four years old. My dad fought for custody of myself, my sister, and my brother. So, single dad, in the military, working full-time. Went to school in Lowell, so that's pretty much my first experience with school, was in Massachusetts. I had amazing teachers, amazing teachers. My dad being a single dad, he needed all the help he could get. So, back then, I was actually thinking about it this morning, and we, I was the first one to go to school, because I'm the oldest, right? So, we didn't have all-day kindergarten back then. My teacher was amazing. She literally picked me up at home and took me to school with her, because my dad was already at work. And I stayed with her all day. So, I did AM and PM kindergarten, and then she would bring me home after school.
She's an amazing person.
So, that's my first experience with a teacher, with, with school. And moving forward with that, we had a lot of teachers that stepped up, helped my dad out, made sure we got what we wanted. And I was, I excelled in school, was very smart, so I would finish my work before everybody else. And I can remember the year before I came, moved to Nashua, I think school there, sixth grade was, or fifth grade, was middle school. So, I'd gone to my first year in Butler, and I was a walker, so I took the bus. I never felt unsafe going to school, you know? And my teacher, I would finish my work early, and she literally taught me how to sew dolls. So, I would go sit at a different table while the other kids did their schoolwork, and I would sew. And I'd take the doll, plastic doll heads, and I'd do all that, and she taught me how to do the clothes. So, it was, you know, just being in school, knowing that the teacher took the extra step to keep you engaged, right? And let you know that they cared. And I went to school on Saturdays. It was a thing called Talented and Gifted. It was called TAG. So, I would get up every Saturday morning, I'd go do science and math and all those extra things. So, at a very young age, I just, you know, loved school and everything about it, because I had teachers who cared. So, then I came here, and, you know, it was a little bit different. Diversity was different.
What grade were you in?
I came here, my first year was Fairgrounds Junior High. So, that's kind of the background with the school thing. I went to Fairgrounds, and then my second year of middle school here, I went to Elm Street. And then I graduated from South. But I graduated from night school, not day school, because I got caught up in what we call here the streets, right? And fell into a couple things that I probably shouldn't have at a young age. But needless to say, I had some people that pushed me back. I needed one credit, and I went back to night school, and I got that one credit, and moved on from there. So, I do have an associate's degree in business marketing as well, here, so.
So, when you talk about, tell us a little bit about what grade your kids are in, so we can kind of get a feel for what part of the school system you're now in.
So, my daughter Nadia just graduated in June, from North. Yeah.
Is she working with you?
She, yep, she's been working with me since she was 14 years old. I have another North kid who works for me as well. Actually, I've had a bunch of North kids work for me, and South kids. Everybody wants to come work for me. I guess I'm just fun.
Yeah, that's true. Kendra Souci Smith's with us. It is Nashville Board of Education Candidate Series with the Chamber of Commerce, and we are live this morning. What do you think some of the most important issues right now heading into you wanting to be on the school board?
Near and dear to my heart first is food insecurity. There are a ton of kids at our schools that are not eating when they go home. So, that's huge to me, making sure that we fix the budget in order for our children to be able to eat at school, because...
Well, they don't have any food, what, there's no money for food?
There's probably not enough money for food, ever.
Well, yes.
Right? Yeah. Which is why the kids started a program called Meals Matters at school. They're the ones that came up with that, so that kids at school that are not eating can go and get a voucher and bring it through the line, give it to a lunch lady, and they get to eat for free.
So, even with the meal program you're doing at Soul Sisters, and also 96 Hours of Hunger, you're still seeing kids fall through the gaps?
Correct. So, it's N68 Hours of Hunger that sends the schoolbags home on Fridays for the children. We also have some food pantries in the schools, which I'm not sure every child knows about. And, yeah, with all the programs that we have around here, yes, there's still kids out there that are going to school hungry.
And, and so, what's the solution?
The solution is, for all of us, I guess, to work together, finding the budget where we could do that. And I don't know when it happened that we are now for-profit in the schools versus not-profit, right? Because the school is a nonprofit. So, why we cannot have vouchers or something where these kids can get free food, it makes no sense to me.
They don't have anything like that now?
The only thing that I heard was that if kids get Medicaid, that they can get free lunch, right?
Didn't we have it when we were young?
That's what, that...
When, when, when we had, you know, and not everybody was better off, and some days you weren't able to afford your lunch, and they would give it to you.
Correct.
At least when I was young.
And that was my thinking.
That's not happening now?
When did that stop? How do we find out when that stopped?
Are you kidding me? So, there are kids that just don't eat?
Correct.
I never knew that.
Yeah.
What else, what else would you focus on? What else upset you, or are you pleased with? You know, there, I presume you're running, because there's some great things in the school system, but there's some other things. So, what else are you passionate besides food?
Special education is dear to me, because of Nadia, and, you know, navigating through the system with her being legally blind, there are not a lot of children out here or services where, for those children, right? We write IEPs, but we also need to follow IEPs. That's my biggest gripe. And I'm sure there's a lot of parents out there who are also having the same issues. It's a struggle. So, if you do not know how to advocate for your children, or you don't know the laws, and they're not being adhered to, it's, it's very easy for your voice to be silenced. So, that's my biggest thing, is for staff, teachers, parents to work together. We're a team. So, we need to go back to being a team and making sure that the kids are having the resources that we need. I was just watching the budget for special education, and I'm seeing that our, you know, the expenses are very high, right? They're saying that there's more special-needs kids that need more services here, which is costing us more money. So, I, I feel like we need, I think we have a lot of more special-needs children, because at a younger age, they're not receiving the proper services that they need, to be able to move them forward successfully.
What about the kids that move into the district mid-year that need so many services? You know, that's really hard to predict with the budget. So, how do you address in the middle of the budget season, when, you know, you've gone through all this work, putting a budget together, and then you may have some complicated cases, either move into the district, or somebody has another diagnosis that they need additional care? How do you, as a, as a, if you take off your mom hat and your Board of Education member hat, how do you address that, or is there a solution?
If I remember right, I believe that when you sign your children up for school and they have a special education need, they also ask for your Medicaid number, right? So, I'm curious, outside or looking in, I'm a mom, I haven't been on the Board of Education, so I'm not sure what those numbers are used for. But I'm assuming that some of these things are then billed to Medicaid, right? So, it becomes a state issue versus a city issue. So, again, I'm not a politician.
Right.
And I don't know, I'm not coming in with the knowledge of all these things and the numbers, and how they crunch all their numbers. All I can do is watch from the outside of what they're doing. But clearly, something's not lining up at the end, right? So, even though kids are coming in from different things, then they still have sports, and they still need to have a seat in a classroom, which means that a teacher has to be able to accommodate them in the classroom. We now have the biggest-sized classrooms than we've ever had. Before, a teacher was only teaching, what, 20 kids, and that was max. Some of these teachers now have 30 kids in their classes. So, and, and not, you know, we used to have a para in the classroom to be able to help with the overflow. We don't have the budget to have all these extra teachers and stuff. So, that seems to be the biggest thing with the contract, of bringing other kids in from other cities and states. But we've always had kids move in from other places. We have kids move out. We have kids move in all year long. I mean, I don't think that's changed. I think the only thing that's changed is how we manage the money. I mean, I don't think that's changed. I think the only thing that's changed is how we manage the money.
Kendra Susie Smith's in the studio. Wendy Hunt, I'm George. It is the Candidate Series with the Candidates for the Board of Education. She's in the studio here this morning. Well, forgive my ignorance, but does the school get funded by the state or by the city, by the local budget? Which budget does it come?
What I was watching this morning is that it comes from the state to the city and then the city distributes it to the board.
Okay, so who's the one that goes forth to the state to say, we need this much money? Is it the Board of Alderman or is it the Board of Education? I don't know the answer. Well, but the reason why I'm asking that is because of what you said earlier. Someone needs to go to them, whoever it might be, to say, is there any way you can get some more money?
There's definitely some legislature that needs to be changed in a lot of areas.
Well, you're bold enough to be very busy to do what you're doing and step out and do this too. I mean, that's, you're gonna have your hands full.
Oh yeah, I just want moms and parents to be heard.
You know what they say, if you want something done right, ask a busy person. So I think, I think busy people.
If you want something done right, ask me. Put the mic in front of your mouth.
I've got a tough crowd in here.
How do you, how do people go about finding out who you are? And how, how, you know?
They can follow me on social media. I actually have a website that's posted. Any questions, I mean, come to the cafe. That's where you can find me, seven days a week there. I am willing to sit down and talk to anybody here in Nashua. Yeah.
Exclusively on WSMN 1590 AM, 95.3 FM, and Nashua Public Television Channel 6. And now your hosts, Wendy Hunt and George Russell.
That'd be you. No, that'd be me. Okay.
You're kicking it off.
You're a tough one. You don't be pointing, snapping fingers at me.
Someone's gotta keep you in line.
This is my home in here.
Well, I'm your guest.
All right, good morning. And yes, this is your co-host. It's different from a guest, I can tell you. We are live at NPTV6.TV across the world, Comcast Channel 6, WSMN.live, so you can take a sneak peek inside what's happening in the studio. And we're going through all of the Candidates for the Board of Education with Wendy Hunt, the Nashua Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, George.
She just notified me. Robert Redford passed away.
I know. I, I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how I'm gonna get through the rest of the day because I love them.
All right, so if you wanna try pronouncing her name the first shot, go ahead. I'll learn and then I'll.
I would love to. And I also wanted to mention that we're streaming this on Facebook Live and then we'll be putting the recording on our Chamber website. So if you wanna grab that off. Our third guest today running for Nashua Board of Education is Jamika Lewis. Welcome, Jamika.
Thank you.
First time in the studio. Very upset because she's got gorgeous hair and she had to put those damn headphones on. She's like, no. I worked all morning to get this thing. You're gonna make me put these on.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. It's not gonna impact it.
Well, welcome to the station.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that, George.
Tell us a little about you and why you're running.
Okay, so again, my name is Jamika Lewis. I am one of the youngest people probably running right now and that will be on the ballot this November. I grew up here in New Hampshire. I was born up in Laconia in the Lakes Region. I lived here in Nashua as a youth. I attended Birch Hill and Mount Pleasant Elementary School. My mother, she moved us over to Hudson, so I did finish school at Alvern, class of 2012. I've been very involved within the community, whether it's with athletic sports. I do have a daughter. She is 11 years old. She just started school at McCarthy Middle School. She is involved in so many sports. She is a strong wrestler. She plays baseball. She does basketball, dancing. She is absolutely amazing in all ways. I really appreciate being out in the community, taking her with me. I worked at Harbor Care for over six years. I was a big part of their strategic planning process over the past three years. I co-chaired their DEI committee. So I have a lot, I, I have done a lot and I am a single mother. But I think that's what makes our children stronger and kids in the community when they see individuals that aren't much older than they are, but that are doing a lot, that are visible, that are out there in the community, that are representing them, speaking up. So yeah, that's just a little bit about me.
She born and bred here. She has zero New England accent.
Oh, so.
How did you do that?
So, I, I don't, it's so funny. So I also, I live down south, so I am biracial. I'm half-black, half-white. I did, I did live in North Carolina for a good part of my younger childhood. I did have a southern accent. So my accent has actually, it's, it's, it's merged. I also lived in Baltimore, Maryland for three years before I moved back home, what, seven years ago now? And that, that Maryland twang started to come in, so I've been around. So I don't know, my, my voice is just, it's just.
It's great.
Unique.
Well, George has lost his accent too. He's, you know.
Take it easy.
Not at all.
Well, all right. Well, of course, as Wendy always asks this, what's the MO for running, to run for school board?
All right, so I'm glad that you say that. So my, so again, going back to my daughter. I mentioned that she is currently in school. She's gonna be in school for, what, the next six, seven years? She just started middle school this year. Her class actually was the class when the pandemic happened. So she was in kindergarten. So she was the first class to experience being in school for half the year. And then everything just pretty much shut down. I remember at their fifth grade graduation ceremony this June, the teachers broke down, you know, because it was, it was very emotional. It was very hard because they didn't believe that they were gonna see these kids again. My daughter, she has a learning disability. She has an IEP at school. So that's something that I had to advocate for her. And, you know, just being there, asking the appropriate questions. Sometimes you don't know what the right question is to ask, but it's important to just be that person that's willing to ask, right? Then you can find out more information. I do remember being there in school for, what is it, orientation days, meeting the teacher for the first time. I noticed that I would be the only parent asking questions, which is fine because not everyone, like I said, knows what to ask or is hesitant to ask questions. I remember seeing other parents saying, hey, thank you so much for asking these questions because I, I just didn't know. And I appreciate because now I have more information. So I think it's really important that, I think opportunity and access are just really important things to give back to individuals. Myself, I didn't even know about that parents and that the community could attend Board of Education meetings. This is really just something new that I found out over the past two years. So I, to be able to be in this position to run this time, I have the time to do it. I've served on many different committees at Harbor Care here in the city. I was vice chair of the Greater Nashville Continuum of Care Employment Connect Committee. So I worked with Tom Lopez in running some of those events over the summer and during the springtime. I worked on regional planning equity groups. I've done event planning groups with Volunteer New Hampshire. So whether it was the Governor's Conference or the Spirit of New Hampshire Award. I've, I've done a lot of collaborating, working with teams. And I think that's what's unique about me is that I am, it's important for me to hear everyone else's perspectives than just thinking that you have your own and that that's, that's the right way because we all have our own, we all live in our own realities, right? We all have our own needs. It's important for us to meet people where they're at. And then just going back to my daughter, meeting her where she's at during a time, living during the pandemic and not knowing how to read her sight words, you know, how to read books, numbers, everything just looked backwards to her. So it was really challenging for her. And same thing for myself, being a single parent, you know, trying my best to continue to work, to provide, to earn a living for myself. Make sure that she's engaged and, and involved, whether it was in sports. So when sports opened up, I remember her coming home saying, Mom, I wanna do this. I wanna be a wrestler. I wanna do baseball. I, I wanna do these sports. I think that's something that helped her, that helped motivate her to want to set goals for herself, which then allowed her, when she was in school, to set those goals. So when she was trying to learn 50 new words within, you know, three months of being at school, she set the goal and say, okay, I'm gonna learn 75 words. And so it was amazing to hear from these teachers and from the special education teachers and, and para educators. You know, our, our teachers, they're working so hard, you know, with limited resources. I know we haven't asked the question yet about what some of the issues are, but some of the issues is teacher retention. And it's important for us to know that these teachers are in positions where they're trying their best to work with all of the students to meet their needs. And yes, it's a court, you know, according to, to the law, it's important for us to provide special education services, right? So it's important when parents are also engaged in these plans, they're also working at home with their students. Students are also able to feel like they are motivated, that they can also lead and be in charge of their goals. So yeah, I'll just throw that out there.
Okay, let me reintroduce everybody, please. Wendy Hunt, I'm George. It is the Nashua Chamber of Commerce. Meet the Candidate Board of Education special right here. We are live at WSMN.live, NPTV6.TV, Channel 6 in Comcast, on Comcast. Jamika Lewis in the studio here early this morning. So, I mean, there had to be one thing, or let's just say it's 2025, we're already in September. When did you say, you know what, I'm running, I wanna run for school board?
So, I believe this was in, this was in July, actually, that I made the decision. Yes, yes. So this was in July. At the time, I believe, I was aware that there was, I think I was the fifth person running at that time. And that's when I found out.
Have you been out and talked to people and find out what maybe some of their concerns are and stuff?
Yes. So I mentioned that my daughter, she's in, she plays many sports, so she is with the Greater Nashville Little League. I myself am a coach. I'm not coaching this season, but I did coach this past spring. I'm, I'm, I'm always out there. I'm always talking to parents. A lot of the parents too that I talk to, their kids aren't necessarily in school or they recently pulled their children out of the school, whether it's here in Nashua or in other towns. Just because they felt as though that their kids weren't necessarily meeting their needs. And I think back to, you know, I did have my daughter when I was 20 years old.
She looks like she's 24 now.
No, I'm not.
Oh, yeah. Forget about it.
Age doesn't mean a thing, right? I think it matters, you know, experiences, the, the people that you meet in life.
What were the concerns of the people? What, what, like number one concerns of the people that you have been speaking to?
Yes, so special education, that, that was a big thing. I think that a lot of parents, right, they are just in positions where they themselves, whether as children, they learned, they adapted to do things themselves. So when you don't see things happening in the way that it needs to be done, sometimes it's, you just find, okay, well, if someone can't do it, then I can do it better myself.
So what is she, Jen, what is she, Gen X? Is she Gen Z?
No.
What, what I? Are you a millennial?
I am a millennial.
Is that what they call them? We're old, Wendy. Forget about it.
No.
I'm not commenting on what age group I'm in.
No.
That's not part of this series.
All right, just a quick question, couple of questions on your take on these things. It's great for me to do this because I don't have any kids.
And my kids, my kids are out of college.
I am the expert on everything because I don't have children. It's much easier to make decisions when you don't have them, right? For others, for others. And I would think a couple of concerns that I would have on the outside looking in, because I have to look at my childhood. Number one, phones in school. No way. Can't happen. Gotta go. The other thing is introducing children to AI and how to use it. I don't know what the school in Nashua or surrounding areas feel about that. But if we don't teach our children to embrace that and use it, they're gonna be behind the eight ball. There are some areas where they can use it today, you know, that would be benefit them. Because I gotta tell you, it reminds me of the calculator. I was in my senior year of high school when they first started bringing in the calculator. And everybody behind us got to use them and we couldn't use them. And, and then look at it now. They're everywhere. So I believe AI is not going away. And I think we need to teach our children how to use it.
I do too. This is my.
I didn't say cheating.
Yes, it's gonna be hard to monitor that.
Well, I mean, it's cheating happens all the time. We used to throw notes under the desk. You know, now, the prettiest girl you could find, you bring her something and you help, help me, please, I gotta go. But I mean, today it's a lot easier to do it because they got cell phones in school. AI can write their report, but most teachers who know their kids go, you didn't write this. I don't know how they deal with that today.
Do you think that's gonna be a school board issue, kinda monitoring how students' research projects? I mean, back when, back when George was in the day, I'm not putting myself in that group, it was Encyclopedia Britannica.
That's right.
We go to the public library.
Listen to me. Your family would take out a mortgage to buy those and they'd display them in their living room. The Encyclopedia Britannica's, the whole series. All right, we're on our time.
Oh, we are?
Are we out of time?
Well, I, I have her going another minute or two.
Okay, good, good, okay.
Okay, so myself, I, I remember getting my first cell phone. It was that hot pink razor from T-Mobile. And that was in the seventh grade. It was nowhere near the technology that, that we have now. My daughter's generation is, is Gen, is Generation Alpha. So I think it's important for, for AI to be incorporated within their learning and their everyday use.
Absolutely.
Even for us, right, being working professionals, we use it within our everyday lives because there's so much information, there's so much knowledge out. Well, hey, you know, it's, it's gonna come up, right?
He doesn't know that.
I know, he does.
You asked me for a letter recommendation. AI is gonna help me.
You've got Ashley and Emma, okay? You've got a, you know, those kids are all AI.
But it's more the copyright, you know, situation. If you, if you take something off of AI and you don't cite somebody who actually said that.
Like for instance, they can, again, teachers I feel are overstressed by too many kids in the classroom. Heather said, well, we only got 17. You wanna know what? That's too much. Especially if we've got kids, which I'm learning, have learning, different learning disabilities that are in the same classroom. That's monumental. So you can teach them how to use AI to help me study or how to research. You can ask AI simple stuff like that instead of telling it to do it for you.
I will say my daughter does not have a cell phone. She's probably the only student.
Poor kid.
Who does not have a cell phone, but she does know how to use technology. I love it when she comes home and she's like, Mom, I know how to make this PowerPoint. And she shows me and I'm like, wow, this is amazing. And she's generating AI images on, on the phone. And she's like, Mom, would you take a look at this? And it's just pictures of our family members and she just created it to be in some sort of, you know, whimsical background. But it's, it's, it's amazing. It's beautiful.
They're growing up with it, so they're good intuitively, intuitively. Okay, all right. So how do people find out about you, get ahold of you? And I wanted to ask you, what are you doing now, seeing you with Harbor Careful? What are you, what are you?
Yes, so right now I am not doing, I'm not doing anything right now.
You wanna work at the radio station?
Hey, if, if, if you are in need, I will say, you know, I can, I understand where a lot of families are coming from when it, when it, when they're facing unemployment, when they're facing challenges, you know. Here, living in Nashua, it's, it's very expensive. Things have just been changing drastically. And, you know, I, I wanna be the voice of opportunity for, for the people who are, you know, working really hard every single day just to make ends meet.
And how do they find out about you and me?
Yes, so again, my name is Jamika Lewis. I do have a website. That's another skill I obtained over this summer, was building a website myself. It is jamikalouisnh.com. You can contact me at jamikafournh@gmail.com. I do have a Facebook page. So you can, my personal, Jamika Lewis, or Jamika Lewis for the Nashua BOE. So thank you. I look forward to representing my community.
We gotta hit the top of the hour now, okay? Wendy, all right.
We'll be right back. This is part one of a three-part series. Our fourth guest today is Santosh Salvi, Santosh, excuse me. Also wanted to give a shout out to our sponsor today, New Hampshire Career Academy. We can't do events without our supporting partners and I greatly appreciate that. Welcome, Santosh. We, tell us a bit about you and why you're running for school board.
First of all, first of all, the guy's got class, okay? Because he's got the, he's got the hanky in there. You know what I mean?
You're a handsome man.
Where's the tie?
I think tie is enough.
We don't need a tie anymore?
We don't need. Too hot outside.
Okay. Carry on. Tell us why you're so.
Thank you, thank you Wendy for putting me at the spot right now. Because my name is Santosh Salvi. I live in Nashua for the last 27 years. My, both the kids graduated from the public schools. They are doing very well. I believe in public school and that's the reason I am running for public school. I'm, I'm a volunteer for last 22 years in the community. Currently, I'm working with Nashua Soup Kitchen with 54 families. We are running the soup kitchen every Thursday evening. We saw 120 homeless people for last, this is our seventh year. And we are doing it from September to June. We take summer break. I'm also running an institute where we work with unemployed people. We train them, we career counsel them. We are working in 12 states. And we are trying to find them a job and do the career counseling in last six years. We have career counseled roughly around 2,200 people and 72% of them got the job. I started all this when I got laid off from one of the financial company in 2008. And during that time, I found out that I do not have the skills. And during that time I found out that I do not have the skills, which is, uh, which has been changed. And I just basically focus on retooling myself. I adjusted myself for four years and build a service which is required for the people who are losing the jobs and who are building, who wants to build their careers.
That's, that's a lot. You do a lot. So your next chapter, you want to be, to become part of the School Board of Education. So tell us, tell us what, why?
Uh, thank you. It's a very good question. But the reason I want to run for the school board is because I have seen the value of the public school. When my kids did the, uh, right from the elementary, middle school to the high school. The teachers over there were very connected during that time with the kids. The parents were trusting the schools and the teachers. So it was all positive environment, even though, uh, mine is like, English is not the first primary language. We speak a different language at home. Our kids also speaks a different language. So initially when we started, we had little bit of struggle, but we basically worked together very well. And we managed to come up to this, uh, stage in the life. So I wanted to make sure that we have the same friendly environment everywhere so that the kids, every kids irrespective of their economy, ethnicity or the background and all, they need to have the equal right to get the good quality education at affordable cost so that they can have a good chance of success, success in their life.
Now, in talking to friends that you know or community members, um, what were their concerns? And was that part of the reason that you decided to run?
Uh, the, one of the things, because I'm coming from the Indian community. Uh, the reason, basically, there are certain concerns in basically our community about, uh, certainly, we, means, we have basically a lot of focus on the STEM. So we certainly have the balance. I believe in, because my, my belief is basically, there are 10 to 20% on the top, they will run on their own because they have a good, strong background at their home. There are 10 to 20% at the bottom where we need the government help. But we need to have policies in place where we need to carry middle 60, 70% to the finish line. So that, that will create a positive impact to the economy as well as, I believe in that when we have a good education, it doesn't need to be, every person needs to do a four-year degree. It could be two-year community college, it could be vocational, it could be whatever, they have the interest and there is a possibility of the job. We need to connect those skills to the job locally first. By having some partnership with the local companies and try to figure that, uh, equation, okay? Once we have that in place, we can serve many students of different background. And that is what I believe in and that's the reason I'm running for the school.
He's ready. He's ready to rock. Now, I've seen you at a few of the events in the city.
Yeah.
At some of the board meetings or ward meetings that the mayor was at.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure, sure. So you're involved quite a bit. What are your, some of your concerns, um, with the school board right now?
Right now, the concerns with the school board is a very infamous voucher program. Because we put the, we opened the voucher program to everybody, okay? We really wanted to open that program to the people who are a little bit economically challenged. And we can give it to the middle class also. But when we open the voucher program for everyone, the state or the federal is not giving that money, the gap to the schools. There are certainly, any school which we want to run, there is a fixed assets which we have to maintain. There is a, uh, operation cost which cannot be reduced by the number of students. So we need to have a proper, uh, policy in place how to bridge that gap. Every time, we cannot just increase the, uh, how say, uh, property tax to bridge that gap. So I really want state or federal to give some money to, uh, bridge that gap so that it's affordable to the, everyone. And I still, I, I really wanted to basically appeal everyone that we need to believe in public school. Because public schools where our kids goes at the very young age, if they need to get access to the society for all the demographics, they will learn from that. If they make a mistake, they are coming home. You guys have a way to fix that mistake by having a discussions and all. Once they go to college, if you change the environment by going to the private schools and once they go to college and if they see a different environment, they may not be in a position to take the right decision and you are not around them. I'm telling you right now, you need to expose them to the various things in a controlled way. Try to work with them, try to see how this, what kind of decisions they are making. And that will make them a better person and that will basically give them the well-rounded knowledge which is required in the current society.
Let me reintroduce him. Uh, Santosh, is that it?
Yeah.
Santosh Salvi in the studio. Wendy Hunt, I'm George. It is the Nashville Chamber of Commerce's Meet the Candidates Board of Education Series right here on WSMN in Nashville Public Television. This is like the third person and I'm sure there'll be more that are continually talking about budgets, I mean, money. And I'm starting to wonder if there was enough, would you still be able to fix all these things? It sounds to me like they don't have enough qualified people to do it. They're having a difficult time hiring qualified people to do the things that they want. So I'm not sure, you know, I'm from the outside listening to everybody.
Uh, I would say the qualified people will come when we give them little bit of a freedom. They, they, they need, they cannot be basically on the toes all the time. People, the kids, right now, the teachers which were there 20, 22 years back, there were a lot of respects for the teacher. Right now, basically, people are, teachers are a little bit afraid. Because the thing is, there are so many rules and regulation where they cannot perform. Because there is always little bit of a fine line where we have to trust the teachers. We have to trust them to do their job. We need to have policies in place, but we need that kind of environment, number one.
What are you talking about, curriculum?
Uh, the, the curriculum, not the curriculum, the day-to-day things. Because the way in which right now, they are basically dealing with the student, they are dealing with different things. So you need to basically get the input from the teachers. If somebody is not doing well, we need to figure it out, what's their plan for? Whether we have some kind of a way to fix that issue, okay? And then we need to trust the teacher and the parent needs to work with the teacher and try to come out an amicable solution. Okay, that is something is not happening right now.
First off, your teachers are overloaded with too many students. I mean, that's, that's a lot. What, 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 do you remember what, when we go back to 1865 with you, Wendy? Do you remember?
When you were born, George.
Well, do you remember how, how many people were in your classrooms?
Maybe 18?
Oh, so that hasn't changed then, according to?
Right now, it is 18.4.
Okay.
I think that's on the low side. I think a lot of schools have 25 to 30 kids.
And that each person that we speak to brings a different thing to mind. Um, I believe it was, uh, it was Heather. And, um, but 18 kids and some of them not at the same learning capacity as others is a lot harder than it was when you had 18 kids that were pretty much on the same page when we were going to school. That's a difficult task for a teacher. Difficult.
Well, and I, I found your, uh, comment about the vouchers interesting because I know you're also a state rep. Um, so for the listeners that don't know what that is, um, there has been an income cap to help, you know, in order to get a voucher so that the families who could not afford to send it. But the income cap is gonna be going away. And that's, that's your, kind of your perspective, that you think it's gonna get
Yeah, I, I feel.
You think more students are gonna leave once that income cap?
Yeah, and the more students will leave the public school, there will be a lot of stress on the public school and the quality of the education. And when the money is not there, how they can basically serve the existing kids.
What's, what is the voucher? What are they?
So the vouchers are, um, the, the theory is that every child has a right to the best education that their family believes. And if they think they're not getting in the public school, right now, I think the income limit is, I wanna say 65,000 for a family.
Right now, 75,000.
But, and, and right now, so people can get money for their kids and take them to, put them in a private school.
No kidding.
Whatever. But with the new legislation that was signed in earlier this year, they're gonna, next year, I think, do away with that financial cap. So somebody making a million dollars can do that.
Okay.
Now, or, or whatever, there's no income cap.
And do you think that that's an issue?
Yeah, definitely. If it is applicable to everyone irrespective of the income back gap, that.
Well, that's gonna happen next year, though.
Yeah.
So that's a good thing?
Uh, why that's a good thing?
I'm asking you.
It's not a good thing at all.
Oh, it's not a good thing. Why?
The reason why it is not good thing because the money which is going out of the school budget needs to be, uh, needs to be basically adjusted by either increasing the property tax. Because state is not giving, state is not giving that money at all.
So you're gonna tell me that those vouchers are coming out of the school budget?
They're going to be coming from the state dollars that, that come to the city.
Where's it coming from now, the school budget?
Right now, basically, the pe, the kids will be, when they go out of the public school, all the programs and everything is based on the number of enrollments, okay? So the more and more people going out of the public school, there will be a stress on the public school budget.
Okay.
Right. Well, I, yeah, I, I, the chamber is not gonna take a position on that because it's very political. But I understood, I'm just trying to get the facts out on that. Um, well, let's see, I think we are at our 15 minutes and I'm trying to get.
So how do people go about, you know, finding out more about you or, you know, background and so forth, Santosh?
Okay, so my, I have a, a website, santoshfornashua.org.
Okay.
Uh, so we can go on the website, you can, my email ID is santoshfornh@gmail.com. And I'm definitely available on the email. I'm also on the Facebook. You guys can connect me. I will be putting some information on the Facebook for sure as and when the election will come by. The reason I'm basically running for the election is just for the kids, which I believe in. I really wanted to have a good relationship between the kids and the teachers. And I wanted to make sure that we are creating the next generation with a lots of knowledge, whatever the traits they want, and make them a better so, a socially responsible person. Thank you.
You're a house rep?
I'm a state rep, yeah.
For what?
For War Five.
Okay. All right, we gotta just take a quick break.
We do. And when we come back, we'll be joined by our fifth candidate for the day, Oscar Vassalis. So thank you so much, Santosh.
Thank you very much.
All right, good morning on the 16th of September, 2025. We continue on with our Nashville Chamber of Commerce Board of Education Series. Thanks to the chamber and of course, the president of the Nashville Chamber, Wendy Hunt in the studio. It's good to see you again, Wendy. Listen, we could talk for an hour, I could talk for an hour, two, 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 two hours with this guy. Honest to God, he's been on, uh, but we're gonna stick to the board of education. Oscar Velaces.
How's it going, guys?
There he is.
God, it's, it's just.
He's our fifth guest today.
He's shaking, he's shaking. Do you remember this studio?
Yeah, of course. Yeah.
You got a staff now.
Good to be back. Got friends, got friends, got supporters, no staff.
You're live on it. Wave to this camera, Oscar.
How you guys doing?
All right, Wendy, carry on.
Thank you for having me, by the way, Wendy.
Thank you.
Well, so for the, for our listeners today, you can watch us on Facebook Live on the Chamber website. You can watch us on Nashville TV.
Worldwide at nptv6.tv?
I should have gotten a little more dressed up if I was knew, knew it was gonna be worldwide.
Well, the camera's on, on you.
We are also gonna be having the recordings on the Chamber website so that all the candidates are able to share.
Great.
But, uh, thank you so much for joining us today, um, Oscar, and tell us a little about you and why you're running.
Okay. Well, for the people that don't know me, I'm Oscar Velaces. I'm a first-generation American. Um, I'm a father of twins now, uh, before.
Still can't believe that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, Bob. Um, what a blessing. Before, you know, I was doing radio. Um, I just, I, I decided to step away because, you know, life trajectory and, and becoming a father, family first. Uh, so I'm a father of twin, a first-generation American that grew up here in Nashua. I helped, I helped dozens of educators, um, you know, save their jobs within budget cuts and proposals under the CAC Committee alongside with other board members. I serve as the Vice President of Nashua Children's Home. I connect with families and, and, uh, to help them with legal services and resources around New Hampshire through New Hampshire Legal Aid and NHLA. Um, and also 603, uh, 603 Legal Aid. I've lived, uh, I lived the struggle many families in Nashville face today. It's, it's, it's a weird, I, I bring a real world experience, uh, especially now more than ever, you know, in this, in this climate. But one thing's for sure, I'm committed to make sure that every child has access to strong and equitable education. I, I, I continue to do so. Um, I, I help families that feel underrepresented. You know, I walk with them through the, through the front doors of the schools and I fight for their children and I fight for them to be heard because they could easily be dismissed. You know, and, and we get lost in translation, we get lost in, in the intimidation of language. You know, so it, it, it's tough for, for parents to feel that they have a support system when they come from my neighborhood, right?
Oscar, you know, you have a big media outlet and you're moving and striving on that and whatnot. And at what point did you say, you know, hey, school board? I mean, what made you wanna do that? Cause you had babies or?
That, that is it. So, so I went through the process. I, I, um, a lot of people within the, the party were, were telling me, hey, Oscar, you should run. You should run for something. You should run for Ward Alderman. You should run for at-large. You, you should run for something. I was getting a lot of su, support from, from them internally for years now. I mean, I've been doing this since Lori was running for Alderman, uh, at-large before, you know.
Lori Wilshire?
Yep, Diane Sheen, when she was here.
Oh, my.
Yeah, so I was, I was doing this for quite a bit and, and I was helping, helping connect, bridge that gap within the community. Um, and making sure that, you know, as much as, I worked with Diane Sheen when there was a business, a barber shop in West Hollis, when they didn't have parking up, and parking was scarce. And they had about two spots for five employees. I helped them, I, I brought them through the process, I connected with Alderman to be able to help, um, help them get those resources that they need to be able to get those two parking spots. For, for people that, that listen, that are listening, they're like, oh, two parking spots, what's that? What, what does that matter? We, we, we all have a parking situation. But when you're on, in, in Ward Four in West Hollis and you see how parking is scarce, that means something to that business owner. And that was a big win for us. So, you know, connecting those resources is important for me, um, still. But now, uh, why pivot to the, to the school board? It was because I, I, you know, you have to earn your stripes when, when it comes to the party, regardless of, of what side you're in, right? You have to do the work and people have to see that. People have to believe in you. And I still have the backing from the teachers union, shout out to Gary Hoffman. Um, I, I have the backing still from the party, you know, and the, the proof is in the progress. Like I've, I've been, I've been doing the work. I mean, a lot of people, I, I've learned not to advertise a lot of the wins that we have within the community because we know, I know that there, we still have a long way to go.
What, what is the party that you're talking about?
I don't wanna get into the Republican or Democrat because it's just right now, but.
No, but you said like, um, people in the party encouraged me. I'm just wondering if that was.
Yeah, people in the Democratic Party.
Oh, I didn't know if it, what this, but you used an acronym before, the CAC.
Oh, the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Gotcha.
I sit on that, so I sit on the Citizens Advisory Committee. I, um, I'm, I'm board member of Clear, of Clearway Alternative School. I'm sitting on the board. And I'm now a part of the C-TAB. Uh, I, the reason I, I'm, I'm involved in, none of these positions are paid. None of these positions are a way of like status. This is sacrifice. This is work. This is service. Service to the community that I believe in, still to this day, right? Regardless of whatever situations might be going on there, like I, I, I'm still fighting for the people that are fighting against me. And I still continue to fight for those people.
Who's fighting against you?
I just, I just, you know, we have a lot of, we have a lot of, I don't wanna sway to that area, you know, but I, I just like, you know, we, we're in a, we're in a movement right now where everybody wants to focus on the negative and nobody wants to focus on the positive, right? And I just, I will not let that drag me down. I wouldn't, I, everybody's entitled to their feelings and it's, and they're valid, they're valid. I'm, I, I want my daughters to grow up in a world, and my wife, and my sister, and my mother, my sisters. I want them to grow up in a world where they're seen, they're heard, and they're protected. But I also know that with the other side, there's a lot of battle within mental health in areas of men that come from my background, that are the first. Nobody wants to be the first, nobody wants to be the last, but nobody wants to put in the work. I consistently do that. I've been dragged down before. I've been put in situations. I mean, not to, not to pivot to my friend here, but man, when I, I'm, he's the proof of an example of, that I'm proud of. A young man that walked into a barber shop, a young man that, that saw, uh, uh, an opportunity, right? And started, you know, cleaning, cleaning the floors and saying, hey, how can I learn? And asking my friend at the time that owned the barber shop, if he gets good grades, if he makes sure that he's, he's staying on top of his education, teach him. Because young men need to have an educational path and a trade path. I believe in that. I believe in, I believe in education 100%. When budgets were being, when budgets are still being cut in a federal level, in a local level, and in a state level, we sat down as a, as a committee, board members, to push back with the Alderman and the mayor and say, how can we save 60 teaching positions that are about to be cut? We're dealing with schools right now. We're dealing with Mount Pleasant School, that they're kicking the can down the hall because they say that it's, it's untouchable. It's gonna cost. because they say that it's, it's untouchable, it's gonna cost twenty million dollars to repair. I live in that ward. You know what that does to the schools like Charlotte Ave and Amherst Street? You know what that does to the teachers, my neighbors? Overworked, underpaid. Teacher, uh, kids, students will be, will be over, will be overwhelmed by the classroom, there's not a one-to-one attention span within kids. Let's not talk about ELL, par professionals, special needs. I know because I've lived it, I've utilized these services, I know how crucial it is. I talk to the community members and I get calls all the time about kids of color being bullied. And, and, and some administrators being passive aggressive because they don't know how to handle the situation while the kid is afraid to go to school. Let's not talk about what's going on with any immigration, that parents are afraid to send their kids to school while kids are afraid to go to school because they're afraid that their parents might not be there.
Let me reintroduce him, Oscar Velaces in the studio, Wendy Hunt, Nashua Chamber of Commerce Board of Education Series right here on WSMN and Nashville Public Television. So, basically, you answered my question of what was your motivation for running, you could, you got a ton of reasons for why you.
Absolutely, and, and put on top that I'm a father of twins and I wanna fight for my girls, I wanna, I'm fighting for every child. How old?
Two?
No, they're three.
So Oscar and I share that in common, I have identical twins, but they're probably your age, Oscar. And you've got the little one.
What the hell happened to that, three years?
Yep, exactly. You know this, you know what they say, the days are long, but the years are short.
Yeah.
But the progress is still continuing.
So some of the things that you, uh, have been motivated to run for aren't affecting a lot of other people. And therefore, you have to have somebody come out and say, hey, these are the things that are going on, you don't know about, right?
Right.
Okay. What other issues inside the school, which we're finding out this morning, there's a ton.
Right.
And one of them seems to be money, money, money all the time, vouchers, uh, the budget's not enough, not enough teachers, paralegals, so forth and so on. Um, and you're first time in a rodeo running for this thing, you know what I mean?
For any, okay, I, I wanna say this, first and foremost, for any person of color, any Latino, Latina, African American, et cetera. For anybody that wants to put yourself out, you, you put your heart in the sleeve, be ready. Be ready to, be ready for anything, because in today's climate, it doesn't matter the wins, it doesn't matter the failures, it's just, everybody wants to see. We live in a society where, I've said this before on the radio, George, you know.
Oscar, this is nothing new.
Yeah, and, and I knew, and I knew, when I sat down with my wife, you know, and I, and I said, honey, I, I wanna jump in, you know, to, to, for, for our daughters, for the rest of the kids, the communities, let me tell you something. I grew up in the system.
Here in Nashua?
I grew up in the state system.
State system.
With the court system, I survived the, what they call now Sununu Center, DCYF. When the, with the allegations of the big million dollar payouts, I've survived that. I went to the national court system and was, and was pushed on from the age of thirteen to eighteen, I aged out. A lot of kids that I was in, in those, in the system with at Nashua Children's Home, most of them haven't survived. You know why? Because of overdose, because of self doubt, mental health, suicide, incarceration. I sit in the seat for them, I sit in the seat for the kids that they've left behind, that they feel unseen, that they don't know where to turn because of, of their parents' past or, because our past is our past, our future and the proof is in the progress.
You, you still believe, Oscar, there's a tremendous amount of prejudice and bigotry towards people of color in, in this area? Is there? Yes!
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get at, and guy, guys like me, maybe Wendy, we don't know this.
It just, it, it hurts me to say this, man, it hur- it hurts, it hurts me to, to feel that we're still there. And, 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 you know, when, when I sat in this, in this, um, when I sat in this radio station, um, believe it or not, fi- almost five years ago, can you believe that?
Yeah.
Um, I thought that there was a, a glimpse of hope, I thought that together, coming together, but now, we're more divided, more than we were back then. You know, and, and I just, and I don't wanna focus, I don't wanna focus on politics.
No, I get it.
I wanna focus on the children.
It's part of what you're running for and you're, you just got done saying, hey, look, you wanna run, you're gonna, you better hold on.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I knew what I was getting myself into, I'm.
Do we still have more time for him?
Yeah, we've got three more minutes.
So Oscar, let's carry on a little bit more on, on how people can get, you know, get ahold of you, find out more about you, your concerns, talk to you, and, uh, you know, of course, vote for you.
Listen, um, I'm an open book, I've always been an open book, for the people that, that truly care and wanna listen, I'm here. For the people that wanna hear the noise and, or, or, you know, just, just wanna chastise or just focus on other things.
I don't think there's that many as you might think, but you just keep seeing, hearing the same crap over and over again, that's.
By the same, by the same people?
I mean, look how far you, you're on every board. You have great backing from people in the alderman, from the mayor on down, so I mean.
Yeah, nah, it just still hurts.
Oh, I get it.
Because, because, you know, I'm fighting for them while they're fighting me.
I, I think it's refreshing that you talked about your, um, your juvenile background.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I have nothing to hide, Wendy.
Yeah, so you've seen a lot of sides of it, um, and.
Wendy, I'm not supposed to be here, I'm not supposed to be here. I'm, I fight for the, for my friends that I've lost of overdose, I fight for their kids. You know, I fight for my daughters.
Is there a drug problem in our Nashville schools?
Um.
It can't be as bad as it was when I was a kid.
No, I mean, I feel, I feel that, I feel that there's a lot of mental health problems, I, okay, here, here's another, here's another scenario. I worked with, uh, the youth council in Nashua North. We were contracted to hear the stories of the ELL students. And the stories, and I can't release this because they're underage and the contract has ended. But the stories that we've heard, that I heard, about mental health, about the, the discussions that they can't have at home because their parents are like, well, we sacrificed so much to get you here, you just have to, you just have to suppress and just get your education, just get us across that finish line, at what cost? There, there's, there's suicide at an ultimate high on, and mental health issues within the youth that nobody's talking about because of the protection of the kids, I get that. But why can't we talk about it? Because you don't wanna address the issue?
A sticky for many people.
Is that a budgetary issue too? Do you, do you feel like there's not enough put towards that?
I feel, I feel that, I feel that with, I feel that with, um, federal funding cuts, with federal cuts and what the governor's doing and trying to get rid of ELL programs, this is just the, the beginning of, of something really, really bad.
I have not heard that the government was, governor was gonna try to.
They, they're trying to cut, they're trying to cut par professionals, my sister was a par professional for twenty-five years in Nashua High North. They're trying to cut ELL programs, I have a, I have a personal family member that benefits off of ELL pro- uh, program. They took it out of ELL, they put her in English classes, the teachers can't communicate with her, and they keep passing her off to different classes. They're failing us up, I talked about this, this is nothing new.
Well, there's blue people that don't even know you're on the radio right now.
No, I get it, I get it, I get it.
Hey, listen, you know me, hey, look, we're going to, you and I anyway.
I thought I was banned from this place, George.
I'll say, well. You can be.
I'm, I'm gonna end on that, so we, we really appreciate your, I'm trying to give all the candidates equal time of fifteen minutes from this time.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Tremendous passion you've got, man, there's no doubt.
Always.
Thank you for coming and talking with us today.
Vote Velaces.
Hosts Wendy Hunt and George Russell.
Alright, welcome to a first of three Meet the Candidates special. Once again, thanks to the Nashua Chamber of Commerce, Wendy Hunt, and all, the entire staff is here, is anybody manning the place over there, you got the whole staff here?
We put a note on the door.
There's no food, they didn't bring any goodies, and I had my friends at Edible, they were supposed to bring us some chocolate strawberries this morning. Anyway, uh, ten forty-eight morning on the sixteenth, and, uh, we are doing the Board of Education on this one. Viewable, uh, channel six if you're a Comcast subscriber in Nashville, if you're not, NPTV six dot TV, WSMN dot live, Nashville Chamber of Commerce Facebook page, as well as we continue on, you can introduce our next.
And also on our, uh, website with, that will be loaded up later today. Well, welcome back, this is our Meet the Candidates series, uh, this is session one of three, we'll be bringing you the alderman, uh, in upcoming weeks. Um, our sixth guest today, who is running for Nashville School Board, is Reagan Lamphier. Thank you for joining us today, and we know you're an incumbent, but still tell us a little bit about you and why you're running again.
Okay, so, um, I, um, I first ran for a school board because I had a son who had like really serious disabilities, he was non-verbal. And he died, um, almost eleven years ago.
Oh my goodness gracious.
Yeah, and after he passed away, I had to find something to do with myself. I, um, signed up for some leadership classes run out of UNH, the Institute on Disability, and learned a lot about how policy works in New Hampshire. Um, I moved around a bit after my son died, um, I ended up in Nashua about, I think about seven years ago now. And by that time, I thought that maybe I could make a difference running on a school board because people who have kids with disabilities aren't generally able to do something like that, it's such a big time commitment. They're busy taking care of their kids. And, um, I know what it's like, but I don't have the responsibility, and my husband was very supportive. Um, and then, of course, COVID came, and, um, when I ran, it was, um, you know, the, the meetings were a mess, social media was a mess, um, it was a really bad time. And, um, I think there weren't that many people that wanted to run, and I was like, well, I mean, I can do it. And, um, the people in Nashville were really welcoming and great, and I, I won, and um, I got on the board, and I've learned so much. It's like unbelievable, I look back to when I first started and go, oh my goodness, I could have done such a better job if I knew what I was doing. Um, so now that I have four years' experience, I really wanna use that experience to, um, to do an even better job for the kids in Nashua, um, cause that's what's most important to me. And, um, you know, I started out, um, knowing more about special education, and of course, that's still very close to my heart. Um, but you know, I have my own experiences in school, experiences that my sisters had, and, um, that my older son had in school. And, um, you know, I've learned a lot about Nashua too, um, so I, I just want all kids to have a chance to be successful.
Why, you don't think they have a chance now?
I think some kids have more of a chance than others, I mean, that's.
How long have you been on the Board of Ed?
Um, it'll be four years in, uh, January.
And what was your motive for running when you first ran?
It was, um, you know, because I thought I could be a voice for parents who have kids who have disabilities, to make sure their kids are getting, um, the education they deserve.
And have we made any strides since you were elected in four years, or?
Um, I mean, our special education programs are pretty good in Nashua. Um, but you know, there's always some people that don't get what their kids deserve, um, we have a lot of kids, our special education population is growing. I, I wrote down some figures here, um, in, uh, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, there were one thousand eight hundred and fifty-six kids in our special education population. And now this year, we have two thousand two hundred and one kids in special education.
So more than double.
Yeah, not, yeah, I mean, not more than double, but a lot more. And, um, those kids, um, they have growing needs, and the services for them are getting more expensive. One of the things we talk, I like, I'm the chair of the finance committee, and one of the things that we talk about a lot is the expensive contract services. Because we cannot hire, um, we can't hire, um, sometimes we can't hire par professionals, we can't hire special education teachers, we can't hire the BCBAs, um, you know, the support staff for kids. And, um, psychologists and stuff, even for kids that don't have disabilities, um, we don't pay enough. And so people are going to, um, you know, private companies. And since we can't pay them, can't hire them, and we still are obligated to provide those services because the kids are entitled to by law to, um, these services, we have to pay two to three times more to get those people in the building. And, um, we've grown, I have more written down here.
I'm glad you read this.
So, cause I can't keep numbers in my head.
That's okay.
Um, so in two thousand, uh, where is it here? Oh, in fiscal year twenty-two, we paid three, thirty-three thousand four hundred dollars for contracted services. And that's without SIR money, without IDEA money. And this year, in fiscal year twenty-six, um, it looks like we're gonna pay about four million dollars for those same services.
Thirty-three thousand to four million?
Yes, yes.
Here's some water.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome, take a sip of that water.
Thank you.
Give her a second. Well, it's, uh, we're live, Reagan Lamphier, is that how you say it?
Yes, it is, you got first and last name right, thank you, congratulations. Hardly anyone does.
I guess you buy a lottery ticket.
Yeah, I answer to everything pretty much, I don't care.
Yeah, yeah, okay, carry on.
Um, yeah, but so, you know, um, because the contract services are getting so much higher and we still have to provide these services, we are really, really concerned on the school board. Like, we had SIR funds from the federal government for a long time that helped us. Um, and that kind of masked the problem a little bit as the need for services that weren't in our district were increasing. Um, and we also, but we have done a lot of good things, um, like, so our special education program is strong. We actually have kids who pay to come to Nashua in our Brentwood program. Um, and that tuition is a good source of revenue for our district. Um, we have the Science of Learning Program, which is statewide, that's for kids who are hard of hearing and deaf. And, um, kids pay, um, other towns pay to send their kids here for that. So it's almost like analogous to the CTE program, where we have a great CTE program, so people pay to come here. And that money will go back into the CTE program with the special education stuff. If kids pay tuition to come here, that money goes back into the special education programs. But our ELL I wanted to address as well because, you know, when I was first on the board, we had a, um, our, our, our ELL program was not so great, and, um, we worked on it a lot, Dr. Andre has really championed um, our ELL program, and it's much stronger now than it was.
So that's English language learners for our listeners that don't know what that is.
Yes, yes, thanks for explaining, and just the numbers on that too, um, let's see, um, in fourteen, fifteen, we had one thousand one hundred and eighteen ELL children. And now in twenty-four, twenty-five, we had two thousand thirty-two ELL kids. So that population is growing exponentially. And so we've staffed up with a lot more teachers, we have got engagement coordinators that work directly with the families, so that's great.
How many languages, um, do you need to accommodate as a school system, would you say?
I've heard there's like around fifty different languages that are spoken in Nashua. Um, now, we are obligated to have our, um, like, we need Portuguese and Spanish are the two largest. So, like, our website should, there should be, I haven't explored it myself, but we just got a new website. Um, and as far as I know, it's in, there's a, um, it's easy to switch between English, Portuguese, and Spanish. But then we also have, in the schools, we have, um, information and services, um, we do translation for all the other languages as well.
Is that, does that also, um, you know, if parents don't understand what's going on in the school system, so they're able to get, you know, let's say you have a teacher conference and you're, have moved here a few years ago and you speak Portuguese, your child is probably speaking more English than you are. If I remember from kids that I grew up with, it was much harder for the adults to learn the language than the kids, to just, they're like sponges. Um, so there's also, you have to factor that in when you have a teacher's conference, so the parent needs to understand.
Yes, so our family engagement, engagement coordinators, they kind of work on a, um, they don't work regular school hours. They, um, they're not, they're not full-time, they work like, I think it's thirty-five hours a week, thirty or thirty-five. Um, and they can, they have them scheduled, so it's kind of on a rolling basis, so if they need them in the morning, they come in in the morning. If they need them for parent-teacher conferences, they come in later and they stay later. And that works out well, um, for people who have, you know, need of a different schedule than the typical. Um, so they, they provide a lot of help, they're at a lot of after-school events, they'll go with the kids, um, when they go to, um, you know, sports events sometimes, I think, oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting that confused. I was thinking of, um, of the, the sign language, ASL sign language interpreters that go to sports events. I don't believe the family engagement coordinators do that, but they are there to help the parents. And they do a lot of work with the parents individually as well.
Reagan Lamphier is in the studio, it is the Board of Education Series with the Nashua Chamber of Commerce, Wendy Hunt, and I'm George. Well, I don't have any children, I don't have any children in school. So am I to understand that you actually have children with learning disabilities in the same classroom with children that don't? Is that what goes on in Nashua?
Um, you say that like it's a bad thing?
Uh, yeah, I do.
Well, I don't know, as someone who had a child with a disability, um, I would have liked to see him included more in his classroom. Um, with proper supports, you can do that.
Not to say that's against that, it's the fact that I just don't think that they're getting what they need. That's all my point is, I'm not, it doesn't matter about what, what, who is what's where, but if I'm a teacher, it would burn in my heart that I could not give that one particular child, cause we don't learn all the same, a little bit more attention, I'm running out of time, I only got this much classroom I have to do, I have curriculum I have to get to today. I know this kid's struggling and I can't give them the time to get it through, that's, that is tough on teachers, man.
Yeah, that's why our support staff is so important. I, like, our par professionals, um, we actually finally gave them a little bit more money this year on the union contract, um, which I was really happy about because I had, my son had profession, par professionals that work with him, and they were amazing. They do so much for the kids they're with, and they're a really important part of the school, and sometimes they're taken for granted. Um, like, so my sister was a, um, she worked in a school cafeteria for many years, and she provided a lot of support to kids who came in. Um, and. provided a lot of support to kids who came in. Um and a lot of people didn't recognize that, but it's true.
Let me ask you this question, Regan. Don't you think that it might be better financially to hire individuals that were born to teach and be with kids that have learning disabilities, to spend full time with them instead of try and have a teacher do it and then paraprofessional?
Um I'm not sure what you mean.
They do that, George. They do that. The paraprofessionals are trained.
Paraprofessionals are in addition to the teacher in the classroom?
We also have.
Okay, well, what about the teacher in the classroom and their only gig is to work with children that have learning disabilities? There are special individual people that can do that, you know?
We have a hard time hiring special education teachers. Not many people are going into that professionally longer. There's a lot more pressure on them because they do have to do a lot of paperwork to keep up with the individual education plans.
Okay.
Um and it's not, they get paid around the same amount as regular teachers. This year, Nashua is actually giving a stipend to teachers who are special education teachers an extra fifteen hundred dollars.
There we go. There's your problem right there, okay? Again, I don't know what they make in other states.
Yeah.
But the incentive to hire more and get schooling for it might, should be on the agenda for the future.
Well, she's the Chair of the Finance Committee, so certainly you've got your finger on the pulse of what's underfunded in the school budget, what's in your control and what's not.
Seems like everything. Every one of them's come in here and said money. This one's a tough one, though.
That's why um I really love being the Chair of the Finance Committee because when I first got on the Finance Committee, I, you know, observed a lot and stuff. But as I've been on it for a while, I've learned more and more. And now as the Chair, I really spend usually about two or three hours before every meeting, going through everything, matching it up with the previous year, with the previous month. Um our COO is great.
Hi, I'm Patty Regan.
Stop it, Patty. Stop it. Go ahead.
Oh, should I be?
So hard to find good help, George. Aren't you running that panel over there?
Yeah, so you know what?
Aren't you running that panel?
Sometimes your brain gets stuck between a single click and a double click.
Yes.
Do you know what I mean? Because you're repetitive for twenty-five years and you double-click on accident.
Well, having that extra, I mean, being on the school board and then you're chairing the Finance Committee, I, the time commitment must be a lot. And and you, you know, just talking about prepping, um.
Well, this is one of the reasons why not too many people in the community know me. Um until uh until the spring, I worked full-time for the US Postal Service. So was a union member for twenty-five years. Um I had the opportunity to retire early this spring and it's been great. Um and and now I'm working as a direct service provider to a young man. Um so I I do the same kind of work as paraprofessionals, although not in the school. Um so I do definitely appreciate their work. Um and I'm looking forward to um, hopefully I'll be re-elected. Um and I want to get to know more people in the community. Um I think that would be important. And it's, now I have the time for it.
Now I know why you look familiar. I've seen you at some of the events I've covered for National Public Television, yes. Yes, 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 yes.
I'm glad that you know who I am.
Well, we very much appreciate your coming in today. Um how can people get in touch with you?
Um so I have a face, campaign Facebook page. It's Regan Lamphier for Nashua Board of Education. And um I have my Nashua, um my Nashua Board of Education email. And I also have my private email, which is uh my name. It's reganberglamphier@gmail.com. My husband keeps telling me I have to work on these, making these uh contact information shorter. Um but yeah, I mean, please reach out to me. I I like to take any questions from anybody and um anyone who's like interested in our school. I think everyone should be interested in our schools because really the schools are like the heart of the community. Like even the Chamber of Commerce, you know, you guys need people who want to spend money on businesses, who want to go out to eat, who want to do something fun. And if we have a, if we have kids that are educated and they choose to stay in Nashua, they're gonna be coming out here spending their money. And it's gonna be great for everybody.
We want to keep our homegrown talent and that's why I'm a big fan of the CTE programs. I think Nashville school system does a great job at that.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much.
And Nashua Public Television, Channel Six, and now your hosts, Wendy Hunt and George Russell.
Wendy, I could do radio with you. I mean, I told you this before, so if this chamber gig don't work out, um you're always invited to join me.
I appreciate that.
But you can't be, you can't join me as the President of the Chamber of Commerce, though.
No.
No, you have to be Wendy Hunt.
Well, I don't know if the world's ready for that.
Well, listen, um we had a great time seeing you at the Anheuser-Busch uh with the Mounted Patrol Unit. That was a great outing.
It really was.
Kind of a shame to see what's going on in Anheuser-Busch. There were all those stalls and that beautiful place in the back. It's now like.
Well, now it's an event center. It's gorgeous.
Now it's an event center. You sit in the stalls and eat, right? I saw chairs and booths in the stalls.
Yeah, I mean, you can be indoors or outdoors at that additional um event space. So I think they really did a good job repurposing it. And and they're gonna keep tourists there.
It is the Meet the Candidates series right here on WSMN fifty-nine eighty-nine five point three FM. Of course, you can watch us live on Nashua Chambers Facebook, wsmn.live or Nashua Public Television, Channel Six for Comcast subscribers and Comcast worldwide at nptv6.tv. Last but not least, and because he's so articulate, I can tell how this guy is, you you will be able to pronounce his last name properly.
Yes, it is.
Go ahead.
Michael Hurlbert.
How'd she do?
Hundred percent.
You've, you killed it.
I I enunciated.
Can I do it?
Do it.
Michael Hurlbert.
That's beautiful.
Can I do it?
Yeah.
I heard bird, but that could be.
It's not bird.
That could be the queen. That's the queens.
That's kind of my nickname sometimes.
Bird?
Bird.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're just gonna call you that the rest of the day.
I said bird.
Well, we're so glad you're here and I I do need to do a quick shout out to our sponsor, New Hampshire Career Academy, for helping us make this happen. Um you are the, our final guest today, last but not, certainly not least. Um I have not had the pleasure of making, meeting you before and I don't believe George has either. So we are, we are really looking forward to hearing a little about you, if you can tell us a little about you and why you're running.
Yeah, um I'm a townie, proud townie.
He's got pipes.
Been here uh thirty-seven years in Nashua. Um I love it. It's my home. I don't want to go, but I see a lot of things. Purposeless gentrification driving out people that have been in their familial homes for generations. Um as we know, we're the top real estate market in the entire country. Right here, Manchester, Nashua Greater Area.
So I read.
Um so basically, I just want to get involved. I mean, I think we all, I think the problem with politics overall is people that are running it are so detached from the modern average person. Uh I picked up the term carpetbagger recently. I really like that one. Um I think we have a lot of that in politics.
What have you done in Nashua, Mike? What do you, what do you, what do you do for work and whatnot?
Uh I'm a personal trainer over at uh FitLab Nashua.
I thought he was a little tank. Didn't you think he'd come in here beefing up on me over here?
He walked in, I sucked it in.
He's trying to make me look bad in here.
No, sir.
Okay, so you have children?
No, sir.
Okay, you don't have children. You want to run the school board?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's interesting.
I have a three-year-old nephew, you know, so you can do the the comparison there. Um I grew up in the north-south split. Um so if you don't know, maybe, I don't want to say, early two thousands, we had the second high school. Um I got caught, and I don't know the, the gist of everything. I got caught up with the variances and everything, getting cut off from, you know, lifelong friends. You're in the same city, but being in opposite schools is kind of rough. Um I was lucky enough, I had a couple friends on the like Student Council that got me tickets to like the dances at South and everything like that. Um very grateful for them.
I I I would think that it would cause a rivalry.
Yeah, I mean, but rivalry, a healthy rivalry isn't bad, right?
Sure, absolutely. No, I mean, you know.
Drives us.
Absolutely.
So you split off and went to North, the new school?
Yeah, beautiful school, beautiful school.
Absolute work of art.
And I don't completely understand the districting and the redistricting, but I think like one of my things would be like, and maybe they're already doing this, is give them like a quarter, a financial quarter, to get all the variances in for all of the kids and then make your like redistricting uh proposals.
What's the variance? So you can apply to to um go to the other school?
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, oh, my gosh, I'm so old.
What is your motive?
Would you prefer a miss?
Absolutely.
Okay.
What, what, what's the MO, Mike, for for wanting to run for school board, though, when you've, when you have aldermen openings and aldermen at lodge and other political positions in the city? Why school board?
School board, I think, will be a good, like, kind of low-key thing for me to dip my toes in local politics and, I don't know, eventually maybe uh work my way up to mayor.
Get away, I love him. He's shooting for the moon.
He's homegrown. I like that. He wants to, we want our young talent to stay in the state and in the city.
Do you, do you know some of the issues that are going on with the school board? Have you done some studying on what what people's concerns are? Have you been to any of the Facebook media pages or anything?
No, um I teach uh children, like I have fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old kids, so I get to hear a lot.
What, you're a teacher?
No, I'm a personal trainer.
Oh, you train those?
Teach them lifts and such.
Okay, okay.
Um the things that I'm hearing about are uh transparency to the parents. There seems to be, and I don't want to blame a side, maybe it's the teachers' union, but there seems to be like a thing where they want to stop parents from being able to view the whole curriculum or view uh subjects in it. There seems to be some, some blockage.
We had a problem with that a few years back. Then it, then it just went silent. You know, uh curriculum that wasn't approved by parents or even known about. I mean, it's not, it just got something that got thrown under the rug or something. I hear it all the time, though.
Yeah, parents need to be looped in. They need to be more looped in. It's up to them to get involved, right? But they need the access. It can't be blocked. They don't want to feel intimidated going to the, to the school to discuss things.
Or the school board meeting, which we found out this morning, anybody can go.
That's lovely.
So have you been to a school board meeting?
No, sir.
Well, you're gonna have your work cut out for you. You know that.
Yes, yes.
What are you doing to spread the word that you are running?
Um I'm working with the Nashua Republicans. Um we're sending out blast texts to party members. Uh we'll probably do some door-to-door canvassing and things of that nature, you know.
Even though it's supposed to be a nonpartisan position, they they still will help a candidate here and there.
Well, you know, one, one Republican, six liberals.
I know, I know. I know how it works, believe me. Same with the alderman and the alderman at lodge. Well, I mean, you got to get your, I I I find it, you know, interesting that you don't have children but would like to be on the school board. I say myself, you know, we're the easiest ones to get things fixed because we don't have kids. So we don't have any emotion involved.
Well, we don't have, I, we, I don't have kids in the school system. They, they have graduated, but yeah, but I, I have three, so I I know, you know, our school, we were not in this school district when my kids were growing up, but I do understand, you know, I'm.
Where were you, where'd you go, where you go?
My kids went.
Amish, Pennsylvania?
No. My, my kids started school in Florida and then we moved to Amherst twenty-something years ago.
Lovely. Amherst is lovely.
Well, I love Nashua, too, though. I've learned more about Nashua in the last five years than, I thought I knew Nashua until I started working in Nashua and I've met some of the greatest people I've ever met.
It's a thriving city, without a doubt.
It is.
Moves at the speed of sound. There are a lot of issues, probably the same ones in every other city in the United States of America.
You can have big city issues in a town with a city of a hundred thousand or less, but I think we're not unlike Manchester. Nothing's perfect. Um I am curious, though, um, you know, what you're gonna bring to it, like, you know, do, have you looked at the budget to see where things are spent? Um and because you're gonna have to be part of that budget process and putting that budget together, you know, each fiscal year.
Yeah, um there's a lot. I'm coming into it like really humble. There's a lot I don't know. I am gonna be counting on, you know, providing I do get in, I'm gonna be counting on, you know, hanging back a couple meetings, kind of learning the rules, the ropes and everything, and then uh I'll start to speak my opinions.
Yeah, and I I've always encouraged people that if you wanted to get involved with local politics, you need to just get out there and start on the school board. I mean, it's prob, it is a powerful group of individuals, believe it or not.
Well, in a fresh set of eyes, you're not coming in with any preconceptions of, you know, had bad experiences. Besides the, the kids that you work with, and I had, I gotta say, my daughter was an athlete and we had a personal trainer as well, like during the summer especially, and it does improve. So I I understand. And she did have a close connection with those coaches that were off, you know, the ones we paid for. So I understand what you're doing and talking to the kids. And sometimes the kids will tell you things that they, the parent, they won't tell their parents.
Oh, I've had to, you know, cross that line sometimes. Hey, you know, Billy, you told me X, I gotta tell Dad, you know?
So.
Where do you train?
Uh Nashua FitLab up on uh Amherst Street.
Okay.
Right across the VOTAC there.
Oh, he is from here. He's calling it the VOTAC.
Back when it was the VOTAC.
Right. So you went all through the Nashua school system?
Yes. Um I went to South, North, graduated North, New Searls Elementary and Fairgrounds Junior High.
Have you always been into fitness?
Yes, yes. I mean, maybe not when I was like ten, um but I grew up, I think my parents knew early I had a lot of energy. Uh and especially with young males, if you don't channel that, it can become very destructive. I think we all know. Um so I was in soccer, baseball, small stint in football, didn't really, wasn't my bag, didn't do well.
No.
So I have a question. This is because you're into fitness and it's education. When did they do away with the presidential fitness test in schools? I found that shocking that, um I heard it on one of the news programs a couple weeks ago. I was like, wait a minute, they don't have to do that anymore?
Yeah, um I can't comment on the exact year. I want to say maybe ten years ago. Um but exactly, like, I'm all for, we need to up the test scores, kids need to know about their credit score, checking accounts and things like that, but if we're raising a morbidly obese population, we've also failed in explaining to children how to use and how to maintain their bodies. And one of my buddies one time was like, Mike, you're gonna do Board of Education? We don't have any kids. What do you know about that? And I was like, I know how to stay fit. I know how to stay out of jail. I know how to get educated. I know how to make money. Those might seem like small things, right? But.
You sound like you better be, be a better coach.
I think of myself as a coach.
Yeah.
No, I just, I just like the um honesty. I think that, you never, you never know on the radio what somebody's gonna say and I go, I love that. That's awesome.
You know, go, you just even, even go to high schools and talk to the seniors on a stage.
Yeah.
That type of thing.
I would love to have um, one of the other topics that's like kind of close to me, um I've heard more than a couple times, and it's not just Nashua, and I know there aren't enough teachers, but there are incidences where, you know, kids fifteen to seventeen will be getting either verbally or physically bullied. It'll be on record with a teacher, the principal, and then maybe nothing really gets done about it. Kiddo snaps, hits him, and now it's an assault. The police are involved and everything, when really it was the school not taking action to protect these children. I hear a lot of that.
I don't know. I'm not there. I mean, I'm old school and Wendy keeps telling me to shut up. We used to just fight in the, in, in, in the baseball field and call it a day.
I would love to have a regression of violence, a de-escalation. People think I'm crazy, but like, I would love it, you know? Kids have a beef at school, fifteen, sixteen, get them mouthguards, put some sixteen-ouncers on, make sure they're medically qualified and they're of the same weight and things of that nature.
See, you're gonna get elected. You'll be, you'll be the first one on the ballot. Well, I mean, you know, of course, this is why things have changed so much, but you're never gonna chase, change kids from tasseling. They do, they grow up that way, you know? They do, they grow up that way, you know? The violence is, I don't know how we stop that. I don't even have an answer. I'm a talk radio show host.
So would it be part of your platform that you want to bring more time for physical activity into the school? I actually don't know the schedules of the, I probably should have looked it up. How much, how much time are kids getting for recess in the lower grades? What type of physical, is phys ed still a requirement? I don't, I don't know these things.
Hundred percent. Are you teaching kids about basal metabolic rate? Like, I'll run into clients sometimes. Basal metabolic rate is basically a rough guess of how many cows your body needs to burn in a day in order to stay your weight. It's a basic thing. I guarantee you, most 18-year-olds coming out of high school have never heard of basal metabolic rate.
Most 18-year-olds in high school have a metabolism like a hummingbird, too, though. I mean, I did.
Oh, we got a, what, a 50% obesity in the children these days?
That's, you can blame Drake's cakes for that. But I mean, I mean, for most of us over there, we, we're burning it. But these, you know what? Did you ever, do you have an education where you could be a gym teacher?
Yes, I have an associate's in criminal justice, and I started a bachelor's of psychology.
I think I have a new radio show host.
Hey.
I think this guy, I could tell you already.
Tag me in, bro.
I didn't know the basal-
First of all, you got the pipes.
Thank you.
They are sweeter than cherries on air. I can hear in my headphones.
Well, you have a lovely voice, too.
Yeah, it's okay, thanks. I've been on it 25 years.
What am I, chopped liver over here with my voice?
Oh, you've got, no, you're the president of the chamber, so we can't talk to you about real stuff.
Yeah, I have to stay very neutral and everything.
I can't get into heavy conversations with you because I get the, you know, this thing.
Well, it's because we can't seem, we cannot perceive that we have any bias toward-
You've brought that chamber to a great level, Wendy.
Well, you're very nice to say so. I got a lot of help doing it.
Everybody knows. Yes, you do.
I do. I have great board, great staff, great community members.
But you know, with anything, you're only as good as your team is, and you know, who doesn't want to work for you, first off? And you've got high-quality people working with you.
Thank you for saying that.
So I mean, I know it's, I know it's a team. I know. I watch it. I'm done on you. Let's get back to this guy. Michael, yeah. Her, Hurlbert. I got ideas for this guy. I hate to take away your, you wanting to be on the Board of Ed, but I already can see where this guy's going.
Hey, I got time.
I'll help him. Why don't we get through the points quickly that you want, you brought to talk about that we might have, I might have sidetracked you on?
Oh, yeah. The transparency in curriculum. Obviously, any behavioral changes that are noticed by teachers that are significant should be reported to the parents. There just needs to be transparency. And the fact that we even have to argue about it is upsetting. The other thing, and again, I'm just getting into this, teachers' competency. I'm hearing that, maybe not in this state, but other teachers' unions block their teachers from being tested on the material they're teaching. If I didn't know how to bench press, and I couldn't bench press my body weight, why would you listen to me about how to bench press? If you don't know the subject and you cannot do the same or higher level curriculum as your children, you need to get out or put steps for yourself to re-educate yourself.
So you don't know if that's being done in this school district, but you like that information?
I don't. I think it's disturbing. It's happening anywhere in the country.
I can speculate and say, I'll bet you it's not because they're hurting for teachers as it is. Imagine going through that and finding out this one, that one, this one isn't qualified? Yeah, I don't, you're opening up a can of worms.
Hey, if we have people in there that aren't doing our children the service.
I understand. It makes sense.
Same thing like any job, right?
You realize you're getting into politics here, and you're talking logic?
Yes, sir.
They don't mix.